How are you, sir?
Great.
I would like to call to order the Board of Alderman meeting for September eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. May I have a roll call, please?
All the same.
Here.
All the board.
Here.
Mayor George Walker.
Here.
Mayor Dorward.
Present.
I pray God.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Do you stand for the president?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first we have the consent agenda consisting of the council report, the public hearing minutes from eight twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, Board of Alderman minutes from eight twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes from eight twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-five, also a motion to approve BB Coffee Lab's liquor license.
I'll make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Alderman Bailey?
Aye.
First. All right, new business. The planning and zoning appointment of Douglas Moore is a recommendation. His application is in your packet. Is there any questions or...
I'll make the motion to approve this recommendation for appointment of planning and zoning.
A second.
May I have a roll call, please?
All the same.
Aye.
All the board.
Aye.
All the same.
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Congrats. All right, next in new business is the PPMP presentation by Dave Christensen from Cochran.
Just a quick comment real quick before I, before we bring David on. Most of you know David, David Christensen is one of the partners with Cochran Engineering, City of St. Clair has been Cochran Engineering for a long time. And earlier this year, well, actually during the budget, I asked you to do a PPMP plan. Then earlier this year, you approved it. Just a couple of basic pieces of information. PPMP Plan Preventative Pavement Maintenance Program is something that we've never done here before, but it is something that will save the city money in the long run and it will extend the life of our roads. When David goes through this and we get to the spreadsheet that shows all of the costs, I want you to remember this is a guide. We can move things around. There's a couple of years in there that Jason and I were looking at that are going to be pretty tight. And we may have to spread some things out, and that's fine. This is not something that we have to follow to the T, but having it as a tool is just so invaluable for us all so that we can, we don't have to decide which road to go to next. The experts have already told us which road we need to go to next. And so just keep that in mind as David goes through his presentation here. David's done this many times, he's very good at it, so I'll just go ahead and turn this over to Dave Christensen of Cochran Engineering.
Thanks, Mike, for disclaiming, it was good. Okay. So let's talk about asphalt pavement first for a second. It's all under the book there, but what asphalt pavement is, it's rock, it's white rock, it's limestone aggregate, the sand, that's the mix with the asphalt binder, that's the oil, that's the glue, that's what holds it all together, okay? So when you hear it's mixed up, it's hot because your oil has to be hot, and then you roll it and it compresses, so you have a nice black, beautiful pavement. That's brand new pavement. So again, asphalt is white rock with oil as the glue holding it together. So what happens over time is that numerous things happen. The environment happens to it, the sun, tires stripping off the skin, the top skin, that oil that holds it all together. And what you see, if you think about it, looking at asphalt pavements, you see they start to turn gray. It's called oxidation. And all that's, all that's happening, that's the scientific term, I guess, for it, is that you've stripped off the top skin, the black oil, and now you're starting to see the white rock, okay? And then what happens, obviously, is once that skin comes off and you got the white, but here's an example. Can you get a license warrant for pitching building? It's, I guess it's my projector, it's showing a yellow, I'm sorry, but you got the picture shown anyway. I guess I gotta get a new bulletin there. Well, you can't see it, but anyway, Main Street, this is your Main Street and it's gray. So it's in, it's in good condition, it's gray because the skin's worn off. And now what's happening is that there's little micro voids developing, and water will penetrate those micro voids over time, which results in crack, you know, hairline cracking, and then the cracking gets bigger. The good thing about St. Louis, Missouri area here, we, we get almost a hundred freestalls a year. Up north of the country, you don't, down south, you don't, but here we do, so I'm kidding, that's not a good thing. We get, the water penetrates, freestyle, freestyle, all year long, freestyle, freestyle. So that's why you see our pavements, alligator crack, with cracks going everywhere. And that's what we want to avoid is when the water gets in those cracks, freestyle, they get bigger and bigger. And if you don't keep after it with your crack sealing program and things like that to prevent it, you will get, this is Bulte, this is one of your roads, Bulte Lane, and it's failed. It's, you know, there's nothing to be done about this now except for take it out and put it back together. So that's what we don't want to do. We want to try to get to it, and I think I have the graph coming up here in a second. This is kind of out of order, but, oh, that's there. Anyway, I'll, let me come back to that in a second. I was on a, well, hold on. So what I, what I was saying was, as, as your road, it's in really good shape, but if you leave it go, all of a sudden it kind of falls off the cliff. And that's what kind of happened with Bulte Lane. If you don't crack seal and keep those, those joints filled and water out of it and do things to protect your pavement, keep that skin back on there, you'll lose your pavement. And it falls apart, and you got a problem, you got to redo it. So the next graph kind of shows what you do here. You know, it goes, gets to a certain point over time, you do some preventive pavement maintenance strategies to it, get in decent shape, it keeps going, decent shape, keeps going. That's what we want to do with your pavements, that sort of thing. So, and all that's in the book, all that's in the report that you have there, it kind of explains everything. So, again, the plan, the whole purpose of this plan, like Michael's saying, is to be proactive so that, it's to be proactive so that, I'm not going to say in the next two or three or four years, but maybe in about five years, you know, the goal here is to not have potholes, prevent blowups and things like that happening, so that you don't have potholes, you have a nice road system throughout the city that, that you're staying on top of, you're, you'll save money because you're not doing reconstruction efforts and things like that. So that's the whole goal here, is to create a plan citywide and, and maintain it, you know? In other words, you know, a car, you don't just let your car run out and never change the oil or change anywhere. We're changing it all, and that's what the plan is for. So what, what we did is we looked at the entire city and physically observed all the roads in the city to see what kind of condition they're in right now. Don't know where the wards are, don't care where the wards are. We're looking for what appropriate levels of maintenance are needed today, and also, as you do this plan, what's going to be needed in the next two, three, four, five, six years. And then we evaluated all the streets with what needed to be done. So we also quantified every street, lake times wood, to figure out what would be needed to maintain them. And all that's in the book. Let's see. The other thing we're looking at here is what type of treatments would we use? There's different things we can do. Each treatment has a different lifespan, the cost of it. Here's just kind of, it's all sort of the book here, you know, chip and seal is not something I recommend, but if you did do chip and seal, which you're going to don't recommend, it's only going to last four to six years maybe. Nova Chip is something we can talk about, that's explained in the book as well. Asphalt overlay, pavement replacement, and it just kind of shows lifespan of each, of the different treatments you can do with the pavements. So getting to the City of St. Clair, and I, yeah, it's young, you can't see, but then on page nineteen of the book, the first thing we did was show all the roads that are maintained by the City of St. Clair. So those are the gray streets in your book, it shows everything that you guys have and maintain. So it's all right there. Some are asphalt, most are asphalt, some are concrete. On page seven, just so you know, these are the roads that are eligible for federal funds. And those are the classifications of those roads. And over the years, City of St. Clair, we have used federal funds to improve a lot of these roads. For example, Main Street, Springfield, was that? Bardot down there, is that right, Jason?
Yep.
I can't see it. And then the one out here, I can't see the name of it out here, the...
Hallparks.
Hallparks, and then Kitchell. So that's all been done over the last fifteen years or so. Holding up pretty well, so that's something that we, I don't know if you guys remember, last year we applied to redo Springfield Road, did not get the application, but I think they'll apply for it again this next round. And it just happens, East West Gateway, they only have so much money and only so many jobs get selected, so maybe next year you guys will get Springfield Road with federal funds, eighty, twenty money. We've never applied for federal funds up there on Miller Road, but we have CDVG funds, I think that, that you should be aware of, it's coming up. So on page twenty, speaking of CDVG projects, this is what we've accomplished. Two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-six shows in there which roads we were able to use CDVG funds for. So that's shown all there. And I guess next year we'll talk about maybe trying to go for some more projects with CDVG funding. So that's, that's coming, but that's your CDVG projects. So the other big thing, major component of the, of the plan you're looking at is to do it differently than we've been doing it before, where we call it the grouping concept. So kind of like subdivisions or areas, instead of going from one street here, one street over here, and one street over here, remobilizing the contractor and kind of being sporadic, coming back to the same area year after year after year. What we try to do is organize your city into paving groups. I think I said most of that here, it helps with getting everything on the same maintenance schedule. On page twenty-one, those are the groups, those names are just names that come from the streets and the groups, but those are what we're calling the paving groups. Again, that's, that's pretty important because the contractors go to one area, the butt joints, you don't have butt joints all over the place, or I have construction strap, construction traffic year after year in the same area, and it just works real well. And you get better unit pricing too because you're in the same area. That's on page twenty-one. So again, one of the things I pushed Mike and Jason on is to create big projects. And I know your budget is what it is, and you have what you have, but the bigger the project, the lower the unit price is going to be, more bang for the buck you're going to get. And I don't know what we pushed on this project, I mean, I think we're in a half million dollar range for some of the years or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, basically, that's what I told you stick with because we weren't going to be able to go much higher than that.
Right, right. And then, and just everybody knows it, if we could get more money somehow, whatever, you would get better unit pricing. And I'll give you an example, Blue Springs last year, we did a project, and these are bigger numbers, but I'd estimate it about a little over a hundred dollars a ton, and it came to seventy-three dollars a ton because it was such a, it was like, it was like an eight million dollar project, so I mean, but that just shows you what you can do, the bigger the project. So if we do a plan with you guys for, let's say, two hundred thousand dollars a year, you're not going to get much interest, you're going to get high unit prices, and I prefer to like not do that and maybe skip a year and then try to just get bigger projects. So that's, that's the whole point, this is a big deal. The other big deal too is getting a plan in place, agreeing to it, you guys all get on board, so then if you bid the project, you bid, hopefully, open bids in January. That's the best time, because the contractors are looking for work, you don't want to do it in July. You do it in January, you're going to get ten bidders, if you do it in July, you're going to get maybe two or three, and they're just going to throw a number at it. So those two things are really important and to keep in mind to save and get good pricing. So there's the plan, it's on page forty-one, and it shows all your streets. I know you can read this in the audience, but it's in the book. It's got all this, all the arterial streets, it's got all the groupings, and it's got the concrete streets at the bottom. So it's showing, it's showing sidewalks that we're talking about doing too as well. So that's all in the plan. The totals are at the bottom, I can't even read them from here. And then also in, in the, in the book you guys have is on page forty-four, the next five-year paving plan on which roads we're looking to do if we stick with the plan or those estimated numbers. And then also, we wanted to look at the sidewalks, and in, in the report, it's just showing where your existing sidewalks are, which, which sidewalks are ADA compliant, the ones that are ADA compliant are pretty much the ones we did with those federal aid projects. But you do have some other projects in green that are not ADA that we need to look at doing in the future. And then also, Mike, Jason, I've talked about doing that future tap sidewalk project on, was it Jason, old?
Yeah, North Commercial, basically from US Bank to Orchard Park.
So that would be another project, and that's maintained by law.
Yep.
We guys could do it with a tap project, it's, it's a federal aid project to do sidewalks. That's something we have out there in the future, if you guys wish to pursue that, we can, we can look at doing that. So we tried to get everything in there that we could think of that you guys will want to do, all in the report. Like Mike said, too, we can adjust this, this is, this is our recommendation for you guys to do. Obviously, you guys have to come up with the money to do it, and again, we can always adjust it as we will, so. Any questions for me? Time to wake up. Put our mind asleep.
When you develop a plan like this, do you expect it to be a recurring plan? So that basically, once the plan is finished, you just go back to the beginning? Or do you go back to the drawing board and create another plan? Because obviously, wear and tear, I guess, as traffic flow changes and change all the streets? Or do you find that it's pretty sideways?
Yeah, it's kind of one of those deals where if a road is, is worse than a road today, it's probably going to be worse than a road in five years. So there's not a whole lot of doing things around, sometimes it doesn't happen that way. But also in the plan, I guess I didn't talk about it, we have, have crack sealing there. And I think the crack line was showing, getting every street at least once every two years. That's, that's what I want you guys to do. I think you guys are going to look at, I don't know, I'm a bouncer, but getting a crack sealing machine, start doing that. It's something that when you do roads, you need to crack fill. So that, yeah, what you're talking about, coming around again in fifteen years, yeah, theoretically, this actually happened. I did a project, I did this with Festus twenty years ago. And they, I, I put it together, threw the numbers at it, what I thought should happen, and they had the money, they just did it. And I came back fifteen years later to update it, and I'm driving the streets, and it was a pothole-free city, and they did everything. And I kind of, I updated it and basically kind of started over. But again, the crack filling's a big deal, and you, yeah, you start over theoretically, sure, that's how you would do it. So you would maybe hit every road, re-surface every road maybe every twenty years, so we kind of made the idea off the top.
Just because of changes in costs and changes in road use, every fifteen to twenty years, you're going to need to do some type of updates to document. It could be that some road, you know, there's also, you know, you sometimes also roll the dice with contractors. And some roads are going to be better quality than others, so that's outside of our control. But the, the bottom line here is that we've got to start somewhere. And we don't do crack sealing here, we, I've already talked to Jason and Chris, and we are budgeting to do a test run in crack sealing right here on Hallparks because it's one of the roads that needs it. And if we feel comfortable with that in twenty-six, then we're going to look into buying the crack sealing machine and basically trying to accomplish what Dave has laid out for us here so that we can extend some life on the roads that we've already paved and then the roads that we will be paving in the future. But this is the start of a plan that, that could put us in a really good spot from a pavement standpoint over the next ten, fifteen years. It's not something that the board is beholden to, I want to make that clear. This is a plan, it is a plan that we will revisit every year. Every year I will call Dave and I'll say, all right, Dave, this year I want to do this. And he'll say, okay, okay, nothing's changed. And I'll say, we'll kind of put this off because we don't have the money, and we'll talk through that. And I'll explain that when we go through budget workshops. But it's so much better than what we had before because now we have a plan. Now we have a plan that we can move forward with. We did get some grant money for the ADA sidewalk evaluation from the county on this, so there's a little bit of money coming back to us on this. But this plan is like gold to us because it gives us something that we never had before, which is a roadmap on what streets to start with and what to do when you get there. So any other questions for Dave?
I got one other comment real quick, just also, as we're talking, you know, thinking about it, City of St. Genevieve. I did the same thing to City of St. Genevieve, I did it probably three years ago. And they're jostling around because I, I don't know what happened, I was like a million dollars in the bottom line on each year for the next, you know, ten years or whatever. I don't remember exactly the numbers, but they're jostling around, they're pretty, when we did this, they're pretty much like, yeah, thanks, Dave, you know, we can't afford this, thank you. And I said something, I said, well, you know what you could do is you guys could just pass a bond, which you shouldn't do since you don't have the money, just pass a, you know, bond issue or a sales tax to fund, to do one big project. I just said that, didn't think much about it, left, got a call about two years later from the Happy Welch, and that's what they did. And we paved the whole City of St. Genevieve this year. So there's, again, the deal with other examples in other cities, we put a couple other ones where they looked at it and just said, well, we can't do it happily a year, so they don't do anything, but still use the plan to, hey, let's do this group, let's do this group, let's do this group. So like Mike's saying, to me and for us, now the tool is there and we can rearrange things very easily. And if you guys could come up with a bunch of money, there's plenty of work to do here, so, yeah. It would be exciting if you could.
Always ask, always ask you for voting, Dave.
I had to say that.
The, the, the simple fact of the matter is though that we started that project already, really. You'll see here, you know, the Cardwell, which is, I think, kicked off today, isn't it? Right, Jason?
Well, locates are due tomorrow, and hopefully, I signed the notice to proceed this afternoon and sent it back to Cochran, so they have seventy-five days to get done as of today.
And we know that the other paving project is nearly half over now. We've still got a few roads to go throughout September here. So we've got one that's almost done and one that's getting ready to start over, over the next few days and weeks. And then next year, we've got three projects that we're going to be bringing to the board. All three of them have grant money attached to them. So, you know, you can make your money go a lot further if we continue to look for grants and continue to try and find ways to, to bring those dollars down every year. And when we can't get the grants, because like Dave said, some years it's, it's just harder than others, then maybe we just shift and we move something to a different year. But I'm just so excited to have the plan in place and have something that I can bring to the board every year and say, okay, here's what we budgeted, we got this right out of our PPMP plan that you guys approved, and then you guys have the document, if you have questions about it, you can always call me and ask. And if I don't know the question, I know his number, I can call him and I can ask him. Anything else for Dave?
I have something. In this plan that you all have talked about, is there going to be accommodations, ADA accommodations? I've talked to you before about the fact that if we have people that are on one side of commercial that have disabilities, they can't get across the street. And I think that's something we need to put on our radar, and we need to identify someplace along the commercial corridor there that would be the most ideal place. I think that I, that's been something I've been asking for ever since I've been on the board. And it's something I think I'm going to stay here till I see that it's done because we have people that live in apartments or we have a post office, there's no way for them to get downtown unless they call somebody to come and pick them up. And I know that I talked to one friend of ours who served on this board, and he has the scooter. It's very, very dangerous for someone even in a scooter, you know, that type of a mobile device to, to get anywhere across into town. So I would like for us to put that on our radar someplace. I know that we have to get MODAT included.
Charlie tentatively got that on the, on the schedule for twenty twenty-nine.
Okay.
With the whole Group Sixty-Six Tap Project, I believe.
Yeah, and then again, they're asking for the whole thing to the whole city though, they're asking the whole deal.
No, I just would like to see someplace where they can, where people can cross. And when I talked to you before, I'm assuming that this is the plan that we have instituted by twenty twenty-six for eight, to be ADA compliant.
Twenty-seven, yes, ma'am.
Twenty-seven, okay, okay.
Yes.
You're looking at that for twenty-nine, which seems like an awful, awful long way off.
I completely agree, I've actually had conversations with representatives because I think it's, it's definitely needed. I know when you talk to people, there's no safe crosswalk, there's no crossing guides at all from one side of town to another. And I think it should be very much like you said, on our radar at least.
And we, Dave, Dave can probably speak a little bit more to this, but MODAT's direction of crossing a route is at a signalized intersection. So unfortunately, you know, we have Main Street, we have Thirty and Commercial, and we have Bardot, and that's really our signalized intersections. So I think that, that tap project that we're going to try for would give us sidewalk connectivity basically from Orchard Park down Main Street all the way to the high school, down to Evergreen. So we would have that, and there are signals at the high school that can get you across Thirty, you know, near the, near the Old Wonder Road there. So that's, that was kind of the hope of that tap project, was to get that connectivity pedestrian-wise throughout the whole city, so.
Okay. Would it put a, a light with some type of cross safety crosswalk or lights at the intersection of Commercial and Main, like it has to be a safe log?
It would, yes, it would update, that would be part of it probably, would be pad signals and some sort of other crosswalks, some sort of crosswalks incorporated there. And, you know, Kitchell is a place where a lot of people cross, but I've been told several times that it doesn't warrant a traffic signal. So I've asked several times. Same way with Route PP, and it doesn't warrant a traffic signal either, so. And for, according to MODAT's warrants at this point, so.
Well, if I read this right, then don't, when you were doing the roads and upgrading, don't you have to like bring the sidewalks as well up to grade, or is that an option?
No. If you're using federal funds to require bringing the existing ramps, but you don't have our whole plan and there's no sidewalks on a lot of your roads. So your federal roads are pretty much broad daylighting plans. But like, and I agree with you guys, and it's just that it's the problem, it's MODAT's route, and we have, we got to go through them, and it's very expensive to do that stuff and stuff. So you could fifty-fifty cost share with them, or we could apply for SVP money, federal funds bill, where you'd be paying twenty percent. I just don't see them participating to help, I really don't. But that's something you guys want to probably switch, if you guys want to go for, well, I think you have to at the very next, here, the next tap round is coming up, I don't know when, but sooner than twenty-nine. So if you guys want us to put a project together to do that, we can do that and just advance the project. Hope we get it, so.
We can take a look at it, it sounds like Charlie can't wait for twenty-nine.
Yeah, I mean, it's like...
If we can get it a little sooner, then, then there's nothing wrong with that.
I have a new project up, we can, I'm looking at that. No problem.
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah. Anything else?
There is opportunity out there, so maybe the tap project, we, and then we could piggyback on our part with a fifty-fifty cost share with MODAT possibly, and that would bring our costs down a little bit as well.
That's where you need that political, all the talk about, just get the cost share. Yeah, no, it's needed.
My conversation with the reps, he said he was completely on board, he is from St. Clair, so he said he would help in any way he could, but it didn't really go any further than that because I knew it was years down the road before we got to that point, so. But I think he would help if he was able to.
Yeah, we'll still fight a project and be more specific on what we're talking about and then go for the next tap round. And then we might, I mean, you could probably have, get funded sooner than over Charlie, so. I'm good with that.
Anything else for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Nice job, appreciate it.
All right, so next we have the special assistant city attorney's resolution, twenty twenty-five dash zero seven. Attorney Paulus, do you have anything that you'd like to comment on?
I just, I propose the resolution just because we're moving our courts from a night court to form a day. And when you move into the day, it runs into a lot more conflicts with that or other attorneys being over there. So I'm proposing that at least if I'm not covering the docket, someone else in my office can cover the docket and have the authority of the city to bind the city on that. You've always tried to have someone at court if I'm not here, but this formalizes it so they can officially represent the city in court, especially since we're now doing everything between eight and five. That's the request.
All right, so I'll go ahead and read it and then we'll discuss. A resolution appointing special assistant city attorneys as a result of the transfer of the municipal court of the city of St. Clair to Franklin County Associate Circuit Court.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh seven as read. I'll have that in.
Any other calls, please?
Aye.
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 Here's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the ethnic ordinance, Administrator Welty?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is something that I know several board members had questions about earlier in the day. I had provided you with, I think, an answer to your question. And then I think Attorney Paulus called it up with even more details. Essentially, I believe this seems to be refreshed every two years. There's not really much difference in the wording from the last time it was refreshed, but we're going to keep bringing it back to you guys every other year so that we can make sure that we continue to follow, you know, state statute and our ordinances. Do you recommend approval?
Not for anyone's being unethical. Would your legislature pass this law twenty-some years ago? You gotta do this every couple of years, so. For a while, we were doing it every year just so we don't forget. So that's, it's required by law, so you don't have any choice but to follow it.
I'd like to introduce bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three for first and second reading by title only.
First reading, ordinance of the city of St. Clair, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials. Second reading, ordinance of the city of St. Clair, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain officials.
I did have a question. When I seconded, then I can ask my questions, right?
We have an empty motion.
Oh, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Hi, I move to approve bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three as read.
So now I ask my question?
Second.
Second, I second it. So does this go into the employee, like the policy manual? Or is this just like an ordinance for the, for the, like the state, just to say that you did that?
Just to say that you did it. And then you gotta comply with it, not just say you did it. But if you're doing business with these things, you gotta disclose it. That's what it's designed for.
And this is attached to that disclosure that we have to fill out whenever we, each year when we have to turn it in, saying like if we have any conflict of interest, correct?
That's from MML.
Okay, so that's not from us.
I don't know if we're probably going to be doing two because we get one.
No, MML just provides a template, but it is following this ordinance.
But I get one as an elected official. We get one that was sent to us that we have to, that we have to file.
Yes.
I don't think this has any bearing on city employees. I think it's the, if that, if you ask if it went into the employee handbook, right? It doesn't have an impact on employees, on the elected officials.
No, I believe so. I mean, it's possible for us to, I mean, we can't have Jason sitting out here and owning the paving company and just being his and not telling you what's going on and putting in sidewalks. He's got to disclose that.
No, no, that makes sense, yeah.
So whether it's. It doesn't, it doesn't affect the average employee, but there are some employees that maybe could introduce some disclosures. Myself, Jason, possibly even Megan, it's, it's possible that we could introduce some disclosures and if there was conflict of interest, even though I'm appointed, Jason is hired and fired, Megan is appointed, it doesn't matter, we still would have to make some disclosures in certain instances.
I was thinking of the financial disclosure.
That's what I was thinking of too.
This is much like a confidentiality agreement. And will you supply that to us once a year or how does that work? Or do we ask if we think there's a possible conflict we?
No, this is like, this is more like business. I mean, if you own the paving company or your kid works for the paving company, you disclose that. So the board knows that you may have a vested interest in the outcome of the vote. I mean, each elected official, the office officer, you know, shall disclose these certain things. I mean, it's, this is nothing new, but it's designed that if you, if people are voting, it's not illegal to give a contract to something that you have an ownership interest in, but the board needs to know that you have an ownership interest in or deal with those. I know, you know, we have, rarely do we have the issue that it comes up, but you need to disclose it if they're voting on something that you have an ownership interest in or that you stand to benefit or someone related to you stands to benefit, like your spouse or a child. The board needs to know that, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. Okay, can I roll call, please?
Aye.
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 All right, so bill, excuse me, bill number twenty twenty-five dash three-three becomes ordinance number twenty-two twenty-eight. All right, next is the budget amendments, Administrator Welty?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. There was also a link to, a couple of lengthy emails that went out over the last few days that gave a lot of detail to what you, to what you guys see here and some questions that went back and forth that got answered. So I think that was some, some good back and forth. But the bottom line is that a budget is a guide that is, that is passed by the board and it's almost impossible to meet that exactly. In this particular case, I am asking for a budget adjustment that is less than one percent of the total value of the total budget. So this is, it's pretty small. There are some large swings in some light items, but those are offset by savings in other light items, which is always what we want to see. My goal, the way that I do amendments to budgets, is to try to utilize as much money that has already been allocated as possible, rather than trying to just take more money from the bottom line or from the reserve. What we want to do more than anything else is, is put more money to that bottom line whenever we can. I think that the, that the adjustments I've asked for are very conservative. And what I mean by that is I think there's more savings to be had here this year. I was just a little scared to, to offer them up. There are projects that won't get completed. There are expenses that will either be pushed off to the next year or be deemed unnecessary. And so I think this is very conservative. I think there's probably, there might be a second. I know that the police are wanting to do, well, they've already gotten the resolution passed to do the Blue Shield grant, but they're still finalizing some of the things they're going to buy with that grant. And so I don't want to, but I think we're probably going to have to have another budget amendment for the end of the year to account for a few other minor things. But, you know, I stand by the transparency that I put into this. I stand by everything that I said in those emails and to each of you personally. I do recommend approval, happy to answer any questions you may have.
I would like to introduce bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four for first and second reading by title only.
And, excuse me, in ordinance of the city of St. Clair, Missouri amending ordinance number twenty-one ninety-five adopting the twenty twenty-five annual operating budget transfer funds for necessary expenditures. Second reading, in ordinance of the city of St. Clair, Missouri amending ordinance number twenty-one ninety-five adopting the twenty twenty-five annual operating budget transfer funds for necessary expenditures.
I move to approve bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four as read.
I'll second.
Can I roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Bill number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four becomes ordinance number twenty-two twenty-nine. All right, city attorney?
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, Administrator Welty?
Yeah, just a couple of things, I'll be quick. So I want to point out, I just gave you guys, this, this is going to be going out to all of our citizens here coming up. This is the, the fall edition of the St. Clarion newsletter. This is something that our staff is very proud of. I want to give a special thanks out to Caitlin. Caitlin worked very hard on this and it's just great that we have the ability to kind of provide this information to our citizens. We're also going to be adding it up on the website. It may already be up there, but we're going to be adding that to the website. But this is just great information to have and I think, I think it tells the story of some of the things that we, as a city, some of the services that we provide and some of the things that we do. And so it's, it's pretty cool to hand it out to our citizens, it's pretty cool that we do that as a city. Other than that, I don't really have much else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Jason?
Nothing at this time.
Two sites?
Nothing at this time.
Great, nothing at this time. Attorney Paulus?
Just to remind everybody, we have a board meeting on the twenty-third of this month and we'll be talking about Christmas parade, which is scheduled for December fifteenth.
Any board members have anything else?
I wanted to ask about the gazebo project. Is it completely finished except the putting the benches back? Or are they going, because I thought at one time they were going to wrap the posts of it, like we had talked about, that the wrapping, the vinyl wrapping for posts had already been purchased, like a lot of that.
We have the vinyl wrapping, I, I, I still think we might just stain it. I'm not sure for, for sure yet. What you see is what we paid for from the contractor. They're going to put the benches back and those kind of things. But then we're going, we're going to add some railing in the front. We feel like some railing in the front would make it look really nice. And then I do think, Jason, if they finish, I think they're still putting some guttering up and some delighting get put in.
There is guttering and lighting that needs finished yet.
So, so there's two.
The contractor doing that part?
Yes, yeah, the contractor. But visually, as you see it now, other than putting the benches back and adding a railing in the front, that's, is pretty much what you have. It's been moved forward a little bit. I think you, everyone should have seen the pictures I sent. The flags are back at full staff. I always say that wrong whenever I send it to emails, but they're back at full. And so there's a lot more room for the flags in the back now if we do have to take them down, down to half staff. Somebody said the flags should be in the front, so maybe in future years we may move some other things around. But, but I think it looks nice. Again, there's a little bit of cleanup, a little bit of grass repair we've got to do in places, but it's far better than what we had there before. And I think if we can add the railing in the front, it'll kind of add a little, a nice little piece on it. Jason's already promised me that we can add railing.
We can.
So we're, we're in a good place with it. And I know it took a while and I appreciate the board's patience with that. Just remind you that if, if we had paid a contractor full price, we'd have had that done in thirty days. But we had a contractor donate some time and some labor and so we felt like it was the right thing to do, to give them the time to work it in because of the discount that we got on that. And I think that that paid off for us, I really do.
Thank you.
Any other in the public? Go ahead, would you sign your name, Scott, please?
Good to see you, Scott.
Good to see you. I have word uplifting and exhorting, exhortations and uplifting encouragement to the city. I did not know that the presentation from Cochran was going to be tonight. So this is on the street.
So you have your name and address and then email that you have your three members.
I'm going to try to get it. We'll do that. All right, so my name is Scott Pierce, I live here in town. And I rode my bike this weekend off Hedge, Weatherford, Casey. Had the best expedition it's ever been in my life. So when I was five, the kindergarten bus went, started down the crossing, Claritown, Hedge, Weatherford, around to my house. So I was all excited, I go to the front of the bus. So I watched the street and the conditions was there. My dad actually opened Casey Avenue about nineteen sixty-two. He bought a bunch of ground, got scared, sold some of it to his cousin who put in a home park, which he misses today. Better for worse. So my grandmother's house had the largest amount of street, or the house she had when I was a kid, the largest amount of frontage on the weather, of the houses. So familiar with those streets. In nineteen seventy, I was eleven, and the city had Chippen seal, those streets, Hedge, Casey, Weatherford. And I, I found out about Chippen seal by wrecking my bike at a corner, pretty bad, at the corner of Hedge and Casey because I didn't understand the crowded situation of Chippen seal, that community. I just want to say that since that high point of my bike wreck, those streets have been in rough shape over the years, just as simple as that. So this weekend I saw really nice asphalt, the best surface those streets ever had. Concrete, aprons everywhere, drain pipes, riprap to protect, to keep the pipes flowing good. There was an exception, I saw some exceptional concrete work in front of a couple of houses. Looked like there was communications with the homeowners and development of that kind of concrete because it was exceptionally well coordinated with the needs of the homeowners. And this summer during the Fourth of July thing, the city had a park, I was on Weatherford watching it from a vantage point of my property with some neighbors. And they were already seeing all this work on Hedge and, or on Casey and Weatherford. So I won't repeat the rumors because they're just rumors. But they were all good, positive rumors, not negative rumors. And there were rumors of developments on Casey or the area there being worked on, filled up. So there may be zero basis to those, but they were positive rumors, not negative rumors. So it was based on the work that was seen by people's eyes. And it represented a change in attitude. So then my last mate, Mike, showed me, well, this stuff you just saw tonight, he gave me a preliminary of what was going on with that. So I won't go over that, that's a great initiative.
It wasn't May, it was, I think it was September or October, because I wasn't here in May, but that's okay. You go, you go ahead.
No, this last May.
Oh, oh, okay, so, okay.
When we signed over the.
Oh, oh, yeah, this year, okay, sorry.
When we signed the papers for Cardwell, you showed me the Cochran plan and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Breaking the city up in zone for the streets, save money. Modot has that, the bridges, by the way, on the interstate, bundles them together and work through that. And target the worst streets first. This thing that you just said, always points to Cochran, they aren't made. If I got preliminary on that, that really looks really nice to remove the politics from the street choices. That's really important. And we had a mayor since two thousand, ran on a campaign of new streets, maybe to be reelected or maybe that was the first time, I don't remember. And delivered on that by doing major thorough And delivered on that by doing major thoroughfare overlays. So high-profile streets that seemed in pretty good condition got lots of attention, and it took, sucked a lot of money. And there were people that lived on those streets. I talked to them, what am I doing this for? Because it seemed that it was spiteful. But it was a political decision, you know, because everybody saw it. And anyway, the little streets were neglected, and no funds were left over for the little streets after that. Last week, I just happened to see new asphalt. I think it's part of Nashville. It's coming off a ridge. Moffett, which is a little street survived, a lot of five houses, and Well Street. And asphalt, not one of those intermediate mixes between chipping seal and asphalt, but asphalt. And like, all I can say to that is, wow, you know, that's, that's a big deal to see that. You know, I bought a bike to ride into town in twenty-ten with intentional, with large blue tires to ride on the streets because some of the back streets are, are happening. Now, you, compliments to Jason. I see him on the back of, at the dump truck, you know, and who knows to see the same people doing that. So. Yeah, I believe that if you can pull this plan off, that it's gonna result in investments in people's properties around town. The town's gonna shape up. They just look better. People will invest more and have a change in attitude, like those rumors that I heard, you know, positive, good rumors, not negative rumors. And and many of the people I know from other towns, they think of St. Clair as kind of shady and unsafe areas, or a dilapidated city in areas. They're outside of the prime commercial districts or the school campus. They look at that as the good parts, and the rest of it's a little dicey, you know. I hear that. In blunt terms, they wouldn't want to live here. They like me. They know I'm from here. They don't want to say things, you know, too crudely, but basically, I would suggest they wouldn't want to live here. But here is our home. Here is my home, my, my entire life. I love this. And I'm so excited about what you're trying to do with the streets and the best, and what you're trying to do this whole thing is just great. And I thank you very much for taking this initiative. And fixing these outside low-yu streets really will help the entire community come up. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Just a scotch over three minutes, yeah?
How long was it?
A long scotch.
Six or nine minutes, nine minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I, this is my opinion. You're welcome to add it.
Well, that's fine. Let's see, we didn't have to write nothing down.
No, we should have. If you didn't, then we should have.
Y'all probably know I am, I need to run a baroque, one twenty-five, Kitzel Street here. First thing I want to say is I'm, I couldn't be happier now that we have a heterosexual, straight, Republican mayor. With that said, we were discussing this whole asphalt thing. I think we need to look into possibly doing millings. My parents just did a, their driveway. It's about a mile and a half. They had several bids. The millings came in at about forty percent cheaper. You can do millings and hot seal. It looks exactly like an ash, poor asphalt, much cheaper. So the only other thing I want to address on this, guys, is the attorney knows what took place, and maybe y'all do know what took place, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty disgusted that my taxpayer money can go to fund this library. And when I show up in the public library here in St. Clair wearing this hat, minding my business, and I'm told by the librarian that she finds it offensive or that it may offend children, this hat is my constitutional right. I have a right to wear this. If it offends you or your children, don't look at it. There's things all over this world that offend us, okay? You're, not this officer, not the new chief, but the prior chief, his two goons show up the library and tell me it's their policy. A library cannot write a policy that says I can't wear my political hat in a library. But this is my right. Now let's jump ahead here. I'm, I'm not thrown out of the library, but I'm told by the officers, take the hat off or leave the property. I was forced, it's on YouTube, I'm sure you've all seen it. I'm forced to leave the library because of this hat, because I wouldn't take it off. And wouldn't you know it, a day and a half later, I'm allowed back in the library with this hat on. Why is it? Anybody got an answer as to why a day and a half later, I'm allowed back in the library with this same hat on? Anybody care the answer there? No answers? I find that ironic, huh? I'm here. This doesn't seem to offend anybody in this building. Donald Trump holding the middle finger? I didn't see a single person here complaining about it. I'm in a library and I'm thrown out of my library, my money funds? The librarians get a paycheck for my money, for me? I'm gonna wear this hat anywhere in the city, period. I'll wear it at the grocery store. The only difference is if I go in that grocery store, it's private. If a private establishment says to leave or take the hat off, I can follow the rules. That's a public library. I can wear it here. This is a public building. The library is public. Nobody's gonna tell me I can't wear this hat in any public building in St. Clair. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. So our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, September twenty-second at seven o'clock. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.